Welcome to the Greenfield City Council, June 23, 2021, the 218th Regular Meeting at 7:00 PM at the John Sun Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street. This is not Via Webex. So I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's being recorded and videotaped by the City Council and GCTV. If any other persons present are doing the same, you must notify the chairperson at this time. Madam Clerk may have a roll call of members.
Counselor Jarvis?
Present.
Counselor Gwynn?
Here.
Counselor Disorder?
Here.
Counselor Bottom?
Here.
Counselor Dolan is absent. Vice President Gilmore?
Here.
Counselor Wheeler is absent. Counselor Mayo?
Here.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Here.
Counselor Elmer?
Here.
Counselor Forgie?
Here.
Counselor Stempel Ray?
Present.
And President Ricketts is here. Madam President, you have a call.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay. Suspend the rules of procedure on page three.
Pledge of allegiance.
Oh, yeah, let's do the pledge of allegiance. This is voluntary. The flag is behind you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, in the business of liberty and justice for all. To suspend the rules of procedure on page three. Would someone like to read that? Oh, that's right. Everybody has computers with them.
I'll read it. The City Council moves that a new order, that the Greenfield, yeah, that the Greenfield City Council suspends the rules of procedure. Chapter 565 Rule 2 means, Section A, Regular Meetings, to hold regular City Council, um, City Council meeting on June 23, 2021.
Second. Mayo?
Would you like me to read the description of the law?
No, no, thank you.
Explanation. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Does there need discussion on this? Um, yes. Counselor Hirschfeld, then Herschel Elmer.
Uh, just a question, why, why the high school instead of the senior center? Is the question of more room or?
Preempting.
Yes. Asking, why the change?
From, from the high school to here?
No, from here to the high school. That's what, am I?
That's not being changed.
That's not being changed.
No.
We're, we're gonna be here.
We're gonna be here. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Point of order, I, I think what he's talking about is here in the regular meetings, it says Greenfield High School, 21 Bar Avenue. I think that's where the confusion is.
Yeah.
Oh, the first said it.
Rule 2 meetings?
Yeah. I think, I think this is some old text that was used last time this was, uh, this rule was waived. The old text was used.
Right.
So we are, so are we meeting, we're meeting at here?
Here. We're just really suspended the rules because our meeting was supposed to be last week and we changed it to this week. God, I sound nasally.
That's why we have to read the description.
Counselor Elmer? I did re-
Are we going, go? Are we going back to virtual?
We're gonna discuss that at chairs.
Okay.
Any other questions and comments about the suspension of rules? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Abstain? Thank you. Okay. Could I have a motion to approve the May 19, 2021 City Council meetings? It's on page four.
Still may. Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose? Abstain? Thank you. Communications from the Superintendent Schools and School Committee.
Got here just in time.
Oh, I didn't even see you.
I forgot to, I forgot to turn my head.
Thank you for having me tonight. I want to start by actually thanking the mayor and Counselor Forgie and others on the ways and means for a really organized and clear budget process this year. We appreciated it on the school side and keeping to the timeline and working with us is super helpful. I, um, I made some notes. Here they are. You don't want me to talk to you without notes. Um, so just a few updates. There's a lot of things happening in the schools, so if I don't cover what you're expecting me to cover, just ask your questions. Um, a lot of things right now are, um, kind of, you know, just unbalanced in terms of, you know, staff leaving and planning for change and hiring a new superintendent and all that comes with that. We did update our calendar for academic year 21, '22. Just last night, we approved a change to that that recognizes the Juneteenth holiday. Um, we were not able to accommodate the Juneteenth holiday for everyone this year, only for our full-time staff in the schools. And I want to explain why in case anyone is confused about that. So it was passed into law fairly recently and because of where our school year ended, we actually were ending with a half-day on June 18. If we had chosen to recognize the, uh, Juneteenth holiday for, um, our teachers and staff in the schools, we would have actually had to have everyone come back on Monday, the 21st for another half-day. And none of, including the teachers' union, no one thought that was a great idea. So, um, we have changed the academic calendar for la- next year. We recognize that this is a, a really important date for, uh, the state and the, uh, federal government to rec- be recognizing. Um, but it does definitely fall in an awkward time for the schools. That's generally around our last day of school, so we will be each year revisiting how to do that. And there are, um, in terms of negotiating with the unions and, and not making sure that, making sure that, uh, teachers and other staff who are covered under those contracts are not, um, shirked a holiday, we have ways to accommodate that that we'll do during negotiations. And that leads me into, um, my next item, which is that we have reached an agreement with, uh, Unit A, that's our teachers, their union, to, um, actually, uh, approve and ratify, I believe that process is done, the union ratified the agreement, uh, last, end of last week, and we, uh, voted to approve the agreement with them last night, uh, for a two-year contract that covers from July of 2019 to June 30 of 2021. That's not a typo. So we will go right back to negotiating with the teachers' union, but we're happy to have that piece behind us and be able to move, uh, forward at this time. My third item, many of you have likely already heard, and I'm thrilled to let you know if you haven't, that, uh, Principal Karen Patnood from the Greenfield High School has been offered and has accepted the Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning position within the central office of the schools. And, uh, I consider that to be a huge win for both, uh, Greenfield and for, uh, Karen Patnood, who is, um, an extremely dedicated and talented and competent educator, um, who did not want to leave her position in Greenfield High School unless she knew that we were putting it in, uh, solid, good hands to move forward. And that just speaks volumes of who she is as an educator. And we're really excited to have, um, the, uh, search for a new superintendent going well, as well as someone moving into an assistant superintendent position. We've needed a support structure like that in the schools for a very long time. So when you see Karen, you should congratulate her. I know she's excited and we're very excited to have her move up. Uh, last night at our meeting, um, we did approve, uh, a, a budget that meets the mayor's budget for the schools. This would be revision number two for fiscal year '22 for the schools. There was a question that came up, um, I think it was probably during the ways and means discussion around the budget process about, well, how often do you look at your budget and make changes to it? Um, and so we are not even into, uh, the fiscal year yet, and this is already our second revision, and we do regularly make changes to it. Um, i- in case anyone is into the numbers piece, which as many folks know who listen to school committee meetings, I am not into the numbers, but I will give you the number, which is $19,731,080, um, was approved and authorized by the school committee last night. Uh, and then my final update item is about the superintendent's search, which is, um, making great progress. We had five finalists from the, um, initial interview round and paper screening be forwarded to the full school committee. And we've scheduled, the first thing that happens, uh, is actually this week and, and at the beginning of next week, virtual site visits, where a couple or three of, uh, the school committee members will actually meet virtually with folks from, uh, the organization or the district that the, uh, candidate is currently in. Uh, we had one of those happen today, so from 10 to 2, we had a couple of school committee members today, meeting with students, faculty, um, other folks that, um, are relevant to that person's job, at their current situation. Um, and that's called, uh, site visit. It's very traditional, it's usually in-person. We're doing them virtually for this search. And then beginning on July 6th, uh, we will have the candidates come in-person to the district, uh, and to have, uh, interviews with folks in the district. And then in the evening, we will have a meet and greet, as well as, uh, um, a community open interview for anyone who wants to attend. Um, those will start on, at 6 o'clock, uh, on the days that they're scheduled. I believe they will be here. I don't know if that schedule is finalized yet, but our intent is to have them here, have them also be livestreamed. Um, I did learn today, very late in the day, that, uh, Jennifer Colkeen, one of the candidates, had withdrawn, uh, from the search, so we're down to four finalists. But I do know, to give you some perspective, they, uh, interviewed eight total candidates, submitted to us, uh, as a full school committee, five finalists for the superintendent position, all of which the search committee was very excited about. And what I told also from the firm that is running the search for us, that the candidates are equally as, as excited about Greenfield. They felt like there's an energy, that people are very proud of, uh, the community, and there was a lot to really want to bring people to Greenfield to serve as our superintendent. So I feel like that is, uh, really indicative of where many of us agree we are at as a community and as a city, and so I wanna, um, you know, really encourage that piece. And I hope folks will be able to come and attend, um, those in-person meetings. If you have questions about the details, um, that's all available on the school's website. You can get the dates and the locations of everything, and the names of the candidates, as well as see, um, their resumes. And that's all I have, but I'm happy to take questions.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? Um, Counselor Forgie, were you, no? Counselor Gilmore? No? People just moved, and I have not seen people move in-person for a while, so. It's, it's not my, um, computer just circling.
Are you still connected?
Okay. So there's no questions or comments? Okay. Oh, Counselor Disorder?
I, I just wanted to say thank you. I watched your meeting last night. Thank you to the search committee.
Thank you. I'll pass that along.
Yeah, and to all of you who are going to all of those extra meetings to find us a new superintendent. And that was fabulous, the report, for getting everybody back to school. So thank you to one and all, to everybody.
Thank you. And I'm very, very grateful to Member Wall, Jean Wall, who has run the, uh, the superintendent search and has just taken it, uh, and, uh, by the reins and just run with it. And, um, uh, the feedback I've gotten from MASC, who's running the search for us, is that, um, everything just went as, as planned, and a lot of that had to do with Member Wall really stepping up and, and doing the search, as we know she would. When I asked her to do the search, I said, "You're the most professional of all of us, so why don't you do the superintendent's?" And I mean that in the kindest way. Thank you for the question.
Thank you so much.
Awesome. Thank you for your time.
Before I, um, call the mayor up, I just wanted to know if anybody wanted to speak at public comment, wanted to sign the form to sign up. Okay? If not, at this time, Mayor Wiedegarden.
I did that correct? Out of practice, as we all are. Good evening, folks. How wonderful it is to be here, huh? It's just great. It's wonderful. We had our first in-person school committee meeting a couple, a week or so ago. Uh, I was unable to attend last night's meeting, but, um, anyway, it's just great to see all of you in real life, as they say, or IRL, I think it is. Um, so I want to start, I, I've got a lot to tell you. All of a sudden, it just like, phew. So, uh, some fun news. Um, I'll start out with the good news. The city of Greenfield has been chosen by PBS, uh, to be a featured city on what is, uh, a program that they call Dennis Quaid Viewpoint. Now, don't everybody get excited. Dennis is not showing up. Took me a while to even agree to do it, because I was like, huh, he's a fellow Texan, there's just a whole reasons why I wanted Dennis Quaid to come to Greenfield, but, huh? Well, that's what my son said. So, anyway, uh, they're doing, they do a, PBS, I mean, I'm sorry, Dennis Quaid Viewpoint is a PBS short-form documentary. It's, uh, three to five minutes. The theme and the, and I have no, I've never gotten a really clear answer as to why the city of Greenfield was chosen, except that I was told that, uh, our team from PBS was looking at different cities across the country, and, uh, the city of Greenfield popped up on their radar. So I don't know why, but I'm really glad it happened. Uh, it's, uh, gonna be a, in its final form, it'll be a three to five-minute short-form documentary. Uh, the theme is Great Places to Live, Work, and Play. Um, they'll be here for a day and a half in early September to film us. Um, it runs on PBS for a while, and then they also share it, and this is the really good news, in terms of putting Greenfield on the map, I think, uh, that it runs on PBS, and then they will also share it with CNN, CNBC, Fox Business News, and other cable outlets to run as they wish. Um, and after a year, then we will own it, um, outright, uh, and we can use it in any way we wish, in our marketing efforts and whatever, so forth. So it's very exciting. Uh, Keith will be, uh, the point person on this. I, um, I don't have a lot of other details, it's early days, but, um, I do know they'll, um, interview three people. I'm one of them. They want somebody from the community, uh, who's a business owner. Uh, we are deciding who and, who will fe- be featured on camera. They will, they're coming in September. We're hoping they'll come during fair time, Franklin County Fair time. I think it's a pretty exciting time to be here. So, uh, as we get more details, I'll keep you updated on how that's gonna lay out. So that's that. That's the fun news. I wanted to address, um, the impact of the vote on the police station capital budget, because as I, following the May meeting, gave it a lot of thought and thought, okay, uh, that happened. And given that this request was turned down by the council in May, it cannot be brought up, uh, again for nine months. Uh, nine months from May is January. The effect of that is that under the capital budget preparation schedule, capital requests will be presented by department heads to their capital improvements, to the Capital Improvements Committee in November and December. And they vote their recommendations to me, uh, meaning the mayor, uh, in December. I review their recommendations and then must submit them to you, uh, the council, in March. So, the 1.3 million will be submitted in December by the police department as part of FY '23, along with the additional money that was spread out by the Capital Improvements Committee for FY, uh, for FY '23. So if you'll recall, uh, I believe there was an explanation at some point given to you that, the original request was 5 million. The Capital Improvements Committee recommended that it be spread out over five years at a million something each year. And this year, uh, meaning FY '22, uh, was 1.3 million, which you turned down. Um, one, I don't recall exactly, I was looking for it today, but the amount for FY '23 is a little larger. So the 1.3 million will be submitted in December by the police department as part of FY '23, along with the additional money that was spread out by the Capital Improvements Committee for FY '23. So roughly doubling the expenditure for FY '23. It is possible that the chief could come to you in January, uh, at the, your January meeting with a second request to fund that 1.3 million, but that will be for him to decide. And I'm only giving you this information tonight to hopefully have you understand what the effect of that was, because the ongoing, uh, issues are still there. They are still ongoing, and as of right now, they are not funded. The next thing I want to mention is, uh, a request by DCAM. Counselor Ricketts, President Ricketts has received this. It's a notice and response, uh, page to the notice of surplus state-owned real property located in the city of Greenfield, and that property is the Armory. And, um, I will read this. In the city of Greenfield, located at 67 Hope Street in the city of Greenfield, have been, been determined to be surplus to the needs of the state agencies of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So that is the National Guard. Pursuant to MGL, Chapter 7C, Section 34, the Commissioner of the Division of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance, that's DCAM, better known as, hereby gives notice that, subject to the approval of the Commissioner of DCAM, the property is available to any other public agency for a direct public use. And that same chapter in MGL requires the following notification. If so requested by any public official or body entitled under this section, to receive such notice, a public hearing will be conducted in the city or town where the property is located, to assist the Commissioner in determining whether any other public agency has a current or foreseeable direct public use for the property. The Commonwealth intends to convey the property through an open and competitive process. The city of Greenfield. One parcel of that land totaling .64 acres, together with 30.692-plus gross square feet of building space, associated infrastructure located thereon, located at 67 Hope Street, authorized to be conveyed, blah-bitty blah, under the chapter, um, and site map are also included for reference and purposes. By June 28th, I have to respond as to how I would like to see it disposed of. President Ricketts gets to also dis- uh, respond. I will tell you that I am interested, as the city of Greenfield, in that property, as I have been for quite some time, um, for housing. Uh, market rate housing, um, combined market rate low-income housing project. So I am going to respond positively to it. Uh, what they ask you to do, um, they give you four choices. The office has no direct public use for the premises described on the attached pages. The office has identified a directly, direct public use for said premises, attaches a proposal summarizing that use. This office recommends that DCAM consider disposition of the premises for a particular use under the management of a local agency. A recommendation for that use is attached. The office requests that DCAM convene a public hearing to determine whether or not any other public agencies have a public use for the premises. I will be signing either option two, or three, or both, um, because I do think that's a very good property for us, and it's situated in our downtown corridor. We want to encourage more housing down there. I personally, and my explanation of what that, um, summary of use would be, would be a mixed use, so, uh, housing, combination of retail or offices, or, or something along those lines. Um, I'm only giving you this as an FYI. I will, um, I have Tom Guarino here, and I'm happy to have him come up and discuss what their interest is in it. I think we are pretty simpatico, so if you want to hear from Tom, I'm, I'm happy for him to come up and, and sit.
Please. Yep.
Um, and discuss it. We've talked about it, but, um, I personally think that is the, the best use at this time for that property. What, I think what would happen, and I honestly don't know, I did ask, um, Mr. Madden, the project manager for this from DCAM, what the definition of direct public use was. I don't think he was ever asked that question, because he wrote me back several days ago and said, "We're all trying to figure that out, and we'll get back to you as soon as we can." But either way, uh, that's the use I've identified for it, that is the use I will respond to, and I have to respond by the 28th.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, uh, City Council. It's, uh, nice to be back home.
Could you state your name?
I'm sorry, ma'am. Yeah, Tom Guarino. I am the Director of the Greenfield Housing Authority. Um, I was telling a story the other day about when there was a school here. Um, I went to fifth grade here, and I used to get the chills every time I drove by, because it was a teacher that didn't like me very much. And I'm really glad that you've gotten rid of that bad juju with this really, really beautiful building. Um, it's a gorgeous building. I concur with the mayor, and I've spoken with my, uh, directors, um, that a mixed-use-type facility at the Armory, um, makes sense. I come from a town management background. I have a long time, I came in from the town of Born. And a mixed-use with mixed housing, uh, market rate, workforce, affordable housing with commercial, uh, entities, uh, within it, make a lot of sense. Um, and we will also be submitting, uh, the form, but we're trying to make sure that we're in tandem with what the city wants to do. We want to work in consort with the city on this, uh, and I think there's a lot of room for us to work together, um, and make some really good things for downtown. The other thing that I think this offers in the longer term, and I haven't, is with the rail station and the, uh, John Olver Center being in that area, future use could be looked at for transit-oriented development, uh, that would combine all of the things that the mayor has discussed here this evening, um, with some ability to bring people into town, not to have people necessarily go out- Not to have people necessarily go out of town on the rail or on the bus, but to come into town to work, and to come into town to buy and perhaps have to work in other areas. There's some really good models of that. Hyannis is a good model, there are other models. But it's a long-term plan that would look, the planning department and the mayor would have to look at that whole area. But for the, for the start on the 30,000 square feet, this is just a really, really good opportunity for the city to do some mixed-use development, to bring in some additional retail, and some mixed-use housing, which we really, really desperately need.
No, thank you. At this time, I'm going to open it up to councilors, but only on this topic. Because we do have the mayor for a little while longer, so we can ask her about other things she has spoken about. So right now, I just want questions for Tom or the mayor, just about the Armory. So Counselor Mayo, and then Counselor Stempel Ray.
I do want to talk about the Armory and...
So a lot of people have, we do know that there are a lot of low-income people without housing altogether that need, that need some sort of low-cost housing. I think it's, to me, it makes more sense to have exclusively low-cost housing. If you have any kind of housing there, it makes sense that with all the people that have come up to me and said, there's, there's just no low-cost housing in Greenfield, or, or very little of it. And I think that's a perfect place for it. You're right, it does fit well with, with Greenfield's area in terms of shopping. But to have shops in there, we have, take a look at Main Street, there's plenty of open shops there that they could choose from. I think that what we need is low-cost housing. For, I mean, we're getting complaints from some of the parks that are surrounding the, the areas, and that there are tents showing up, and with drug use, and I'd like to see low-cost housing.
Okay, thank you, I was going to bring you back.
Okay.
Just stay on that, thank you. Counselor Stempel Ray.
Thank you. So that is within, I don't know why it's barking, I think it's just really loud. That's within the OZ, the opportunity zone, so I'm curious how. I'm curious how, and I attended the seminar at the FERCog pre-COVID, about how that unit itself, to make it housing is going to be an extreme amount of funds to do that. And so I'm curious who, I'm excited for the project because it's a beautiful building. I'm just curious, who foots the bill to make it housing when it's a public project?
I think I can answer that question.
Just a follow-up to, like, do we lose out on the OZ? Because obviously, that's foreign investors, so I'm just curious.
No, I don't think we do. I honestly don't know. Admitting some ignorance here, and admitting that it's sometimes difficult to get real answers out of DCAM. What the process is, they're looking for information right now, is the way I see it. Maybe Tom has some more experience with DCAM than I do. They're looking for information now. They want to know that the city of Greenfield is interested in this property, so they're not going to put it on the open market for anyone and everyone at this point in time. Maybe, that's the way I read it. So I think what would happen is that if they agreed with us and they liked the idea, I know at one point when the Armory had it, and I don't think they do, because they've turned it over to DCAM now as surplus property. But their thing was, it should be veterans' housing, first and foremost, and then after that, whatever. But I don't think that's a restriction on it right now. So I think it's up to us, in our proposal back to them, to create the vision that we want. I agree with you, and I don't disagree with you, Counselor Mayo, I think you're right. We, we, we have some gaps in our housing, and one is low income, and the other one is market rate. And I'm not talking highly expensive, I'm just talking, you know, middle-market. So I think that what will happen is, if they turn it over to the city of Greenfield, we would immediately come to you for a surplus property, and we would either put it up for auction, or we would ask for requests for proposals. You are correct, I was at the same seminar. It does have to pencil out, which is a fancy word for saying, it has to make sense for any investor to invest in it for any type of housing. So, yeah, any type of anything. So I'm just wanting us to take advantage of this opportunity so that we have, for lack of a better word, control over it, and have some ability and some say in how we want that piece of property to be used. And if the, if DCAM is sincere in its efforts, I don't think they want to hang on to it for any length of time. So if they do turn it over to us, then I think the process would then go forward as to how we want it to, how we want to be able to use it.
Counselor Gilmore.
You've probably covered this already, but what's the timeframe that we're looking at? If they accept this, I mean, I don't imagine this is happening this year or next, right?
I have to return this page, as, as does President Ricketts. By June 28th, which is not many days following, so the timing is good. So I don't know, it doesn't appear on the agenda tonight, but Kathy had some insight into what the council may want to do, or what they might want to instruct Counselor Ricketts to do.
Right, so...
But the timeframe is, I have no idea what they'll do after June 28th. I honestly don't, they didn't tell me that.
Okay, so what happened is, when I received this in email, I know the signature is only for the mayor and I. So the mayor and I have been talking, well, a lot, as we should, but really, a lot lately, in the last two or three weeks. And so I asked that, you know, she bring this forward tonight, and then we asked for questions and comments, and I kind of hear from you. I can decide if I want to sign this or not. Because it would be good, if she's going to sign it, meaning the mayor, then the council does too, that it looks like a concerted effort, that we really do want this. I mean, the council, I could not sign it, and she, Mayor, Winnie Gardner can sign it, and it still moves forward. But, you know, I'd like to do it with some sort of support, but it's not a vote or anything. I can just be able to tell by your questions and your comments you make, and then I'll make that decision. Okay, and so Counselor Elmer.
I certainly am.
Okay, does anyone else have any questions or comments? Counselor Gwynn.
I just want to build a little bit off of what Counselor Stempel Ray said, in that I'm, I'm very excited that this is coming up. But I too believe that we've got to find out how quickly we can get it into private hands and get it funded by the private sector. Because our experience with funding repairs on dilapidated buildings is not very good for our people. You know, so I think, I just want to know how fast that can happen. If it goes out for RFP, when you were, you know, how that all works to make sure that, I'd love to see it turned into housing of your choice, because housing's not my expertise. That's why we have people like you. And once you determine that, I just want to make sure that we're not footing the bill, and where, that someone can make money. We have some great landlords that do some amazing renovations in the private sector in this town, and a city. And I, I'd like to see that, that, how quickly that can happen and go through, so we don't get stuck with another building.
It is not my intention to own this building. The city of Greenfield, I have said many times, is not interested in being a landlord. They want to facilitate that to happen, so if...
Thank you, Mayor.
If I could, Mayor, Madam President.
Please. You know what, I'm, when I look at you, all I see is the light of a car or something. So that's just, that's all that's in my face, so...
Oh, I'm sorry.
So please, go ahead.
The intent would, you know, and I want to answer Counselor Mayo too. There are ways, you know, this is early days. There are ways to make this work and have wraparound services for some of those, if there are any lower-income units that go there, and it makes sense. That's what my job is, to be able to provide affordable housing, and housing for people who need it. There are also, there, there will be developers that want to work with the city to do this, as well as state groups that are going to be welcoming this. Mass Development is certainly a group that may want to come in here. The historic preservation piece of that, there, there certainly will be some historic tax credits available for whoever develops the property. There are pools of money for housing right now that there, there just hasn't been for decades that are coming through. So I think, however the city, the mayor and the council decide to go, there will be private investors that are very, very interested in doing this, and there are incentives from the state, the federal government, and various types of tax credits to preserve the historic nature of the building.
Thank you so much, thank you, Felipe. Is there any other questions or comments from anyone on council? Okay, so at this time, thank you so much, Tom. Appreciate your presence, and come back anytime to your old school, okay?
It was, it's just my pleasure to be back home. It just, it's really nice to be back in Greenfield, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. So Mayor Winnie Gardner?
I'll just keep going.
Please.
I've got a few things here. But I will say, I attended, not school here, but many, many school committee meetings in the old building. So I understand his concerns. His PTSD, or whatever he wants to call it. But anyway, I actually grew to love that building. So the next thing is, and you brought this up, Counselor Mayo, updates on parks per a meeting of department heads that are relevant that we had yesterday. I know that many of you have heard from your constituents, as we have in the mayor's office, regarding the status of many of our parks, the Veterans Mall and the parking garage, with respect to trash, public defec, I'm sorry, you know, I got to give it to you straight. Public defecation and urination, drug use, needles left on the ground, and people living in tents in our parks. The pandemic has certainly caused this problem to increase, and we are seeing it even in our community. I want you to know that all of the relevant departments are aware of these problems, and we are working together to deal with them, each of the issues. And those departments are the DPW, the Recreation, the Health Department, and the Police Department, on a regular basis, daily, really. A particular concern because of the public health consequences for our citizens and city workers are the public defecation, urination, and the leaving of needles, not in Sharps containers, but on the ground. We met again this week to discuss particular strategies that we, the city, may employ in order to better handle the situation. But before I discuss those strategies, some of those strategies, and the challenges, I'd like to talk about the positive and proactive work that these departments have engaged in. Director Hoffman, that's Jennifer Hoffman, our health director, has proactively reached out to and worked with Tapestry to put Sharps containers in our parks. Tapestry is responsible, and is supposed to be, remain responsible, for picking them up on a weekly basis, and is generally doing that. But perhaps not as regularly as we thought they might. But we have put out Sharps containers within most of our parks. All of the departments do work together to tackle as many of the complaints as possible, as soon as possible, depending on whose responsibility it is to respond. I mean, it's not, sometimes it's somebody observing an illegal activity going on in the park, or what they perceive to be an illegal activity. They may call, whoever they call, 911, the dispatcher dispatches somebody. That illegal activity could easily have happened and been dispersed at the time. So it's very difficult to keep up with it. And I just want you to know what our departments are dealing with. Trash building up. DPW does respond. Director Hoffman is working, this is a really positive piece, which I'm excited to report to you. Director Hoffman is working with local health providers. That would be CHC, Community Health, folks on Main Street. Tapestry, Recover Project, to set up pop-up medical clinics to launch in mid-July, in order to do, so we're talking, they would go to the source. They will go to our parks, they will go to where people are out for the day. To do public educate, and education around public health issues, such as public defecation and urination, which can be the cause of very serious infectious diseases. And I really never gave it much thought until Jennifer started rattling them off to us. For anyone, and that's for anyone who may come in contact with them. Screening, they will be doing screening for HIV and syphilis. They will do blood draws. They will do hepatitis A and B vaccinations. Urine testing for STDs and for COVID. I'm sorry, urine testing for STDs, comma, COVID. And they will also be doing COVID and flu vaccines to the most vulnerable in our community. And it has been a really long time since the city of Greenfield has had a health department that is that proactive, and that is that committed to public health, and is that committed to reaching out. So we all owe Director Hoffman a big shout-out. And I would invite you to have her come and talk to you at some meeting, because she is very passionate about what she does. So I just want you to know that she put this together all on her own, because she sees the need so much. Kristy Moore has hired seasonally. She has a group of four kids who are going out into the parks and picking up trash regularly from now till whenever the, whatever is deemed the end of the summer for them, probably when they go back to school. And they're a great group of kids. And she says they're all really excited about what they do. The police department does do regular checks on a day and, on their day and night shifts on all the parks. If they see something that is not supposed to be happening, they will discuss the situation with the person or persons. But they can only do this if they see something in action. So if they see somebody who's pitching a tent someplace where they shouldn't, they discourage them from doing that. I think that some of the challenges that we face are simply that we, we do not have enough staffing in our departments for the degree to which this has increased. I mean, it's happened, and because of certain, of budget cuts and so forth, staffing has been reduced. So for instance, and Marla was certainly here, and if you wanted to ask him a question, he used, I think I have these numbers right. He used to have 12 staff people available to do trash and cleanup every day. Now he has eight staff people, and they do it four days a week. Well, the DPW does go to the parking garage on Friday, and the parking garage is of particular concern to us, because it is a very public space. It's used by a lot of different people, but it's also been... but it's also being used, um, uh, by people who are staying there overnight. The parking garage is a particularly bad problem right now, as I just said. Uh, people are squatting there and also publicly urinating and defecating. Dispatch fields numerous complaints, which are addressed as soon as possible, given staffing per shifts. I, I think, um, that we can all agree that this is a public health problem and it may be nearing a crisis. I don't mean that to be in an inflammatory way, I just mean we, we have a problem that's kind of been ongoing, but it seems to have, um, grown exponentially in recent weeks. And I feel like we are actually doing a pretty good job of keeping it undercover, but I know that you have, uh, constituents in neighborhoods that see things that we don't see because they're out in their neighborhoods as they should be. So, um, we will continue to work on it, uh, with our partners in social services and others who can volunteer to help. And some of the ideas that we came up with, I'm not sure that, I mean, we can, you know, they're not things that can happen immediately. Christie would like to see us have what we call Park Rangers, people that, um, are in the parks on a regular basis, um, sort of fielding, you know. Nobody with, just people that would be, have their eyes on what's going on in each of our parks on a, on a regular basis. None of these are, um, issues that we can address immediately, I don't think. I just, the point of my bringing this up is because we want, want you to know that the city isn't ignoring this problem in hopes that it will go away because we know it won't go away. We're, we're here to, um, address it as best we can with the staffing that we have and as often as we can. So that's it and I'm happy to take a question or two on that and then I have a couple more items and then I think I'm done.
Why don't we just go around the horn? This is going to be easier. So we'll start with Counselor Gwen. And just one person to the next, if you want to speak, go ahead. If you don't, let the next person go ahead.
First, I want to, um, thank the mayor and the DPW for responding over the weekend. Um, I had a friend, constituent, whatever we want to call them today, um, that reached out to me with, um, pictures that were of the parking garage. I forwarded those immediately to several of you. Counselor Gilmore and I were both made aware of that over the weekend and, um, I sent those on and immediately was, you know, was told at that point we were sending someone over to see what could be done and get on it. We can't ask for any more at that point to say that they went over and they, and they responded to it and that's the kind of, um, information I would expect. I also had a conversation with Director Warner and said, you know, it, it just baffles me that we have a piece of property that cost us so much money and it's not anyone's fault, but we have to figure out a solution to, to stop, you know, the manpower to get it done. The, just the risk we're taking on, I mean, who would use that piece of property over the weekend in the condition it was in? I would have left Greenfield if I was coming to visit and walked in on this, never mind walk out of the parking garage. It was not just, oh, that's, you know, there's a piece of trash on the road. It was just disgusting and in fact was worse when you arrived than the pictures depicted. Thank you for responding. I know you're working on it. Because it was called to my attention, I'll follow up with all of you on it, but I appreciate everyone getting to it as soon as possible. I don't know if there's a quick answer, but you did what you could and that means something to me, so thank you for that.
Well, thank you. Well, I, I will say that based on those photographs, Keith, my communications director who lives across the street, walked over there and he was horrified by it all as well. It was, it was exactly what was showed in the pictures and it was, um, it was, um, pretty emotionally disrupting for him. So, um, we are working on it. I, I don't know, I mean, there's, the particular design of the building, you know, there isn't any water there, so it's not like we can easily go in and attach a hose to something and spray it all down. Uh, one of the, um, city hall, um, custodians goes over there or used to. I mean, according to Director Warner, this has been going on almost since the day the parking garage opened. And I mean, it is, it is not unusual in many cities, I'm sure. But, um, the custodian from the city hall would go over there and wash it down, but it has gotten to the position, it has gotten to the situation now where it's a public safety, public health hazard for the people who work for the city of Greenfield to go in there because it is so, um, massive in, in the way, it's not once or twice a week or a month. It is kind of ongoing. So I'm not exactly sure what the situation is and I don't think it's a quick fix. We are considering, um, some of the ways in which we can, can make it happen, but I'm not sure what the exact answer is, so we're open to ideas on that.
You did state in this presentation that it was an executive issue.
Excuse me, is your microphone on or can I just not hear you? Oh, it's okay, I'm sorry. Just for the people at home also.
I can hear her because she's right across from me.
I don't get on TV if I don't push the button. So you stated in your presentation that this is a, in part, a staffing issue to go ahead and, um, solve some of these issues. So my question is always about the money. And I'm wondering if, um, a couple of things, first of all, if money were made available, however, by however means possible, would you automatically go ahead and increase staff in the departments to deal with this, um, situation that you are, um, saying is, is immediate and severe?
Mm-hmm. Well, automatic is a relative term, as you know.
I know.
I don't know how on that, automatic I could do it, but I would certainly discuss it with the department heads that would be involved in. I think in this case it would both be the police department because not all shifts are staffed equal, you know, they have staffing issues in the police department. Um, and, um, and certainly DPW. And to a certain extent Dispatch, because they have to watch the cameras and it's very, very difficult for them in the situation that they're in to be watching those cameras at, at all times. You know, there's just not enough room for them to see every camera that we have available to us. And that's, you know, like it or not, that's a critical piece because if you see someone doing something at a certain point in time, they can dispatch someone in a pretty quick fashion. If you can't see them, it, it's moot almost because you can't just go show up and decide that somebody did something without the proof that they did it, so.
So this might be a little off topic, but I know that we are.
The answer is yes. I think if there were some way in which we were provided some additional funds, and we do it in the proper way, we could, uh, certainly discuss or I would certainly bring a proposal to you for increased staffing.
Yeah, given of what we've been through with COVID, um, I think what I find most disturbing is, what Ms. Hoffman was talking about in regard to infectious diseases. So this is a little off topic, but I know that we are going to receive some recovery money. And I'm thinking, I don't, I'd love to hear more about that at some point, but I'm also thinking if there's the ability to use that to help us in prevention, I would really encourage that.
There might be. She gave me a nice proposal. Which I'm considering.
Thank you, Mayor.
Can I suggest that one of the reasons people are, uh, defecating in public is because there aren't enough public toilets? And have you considered deploying, uh, porta potties around the city?
Well, there's an interesting story about that. Number one, a obvious, um, choice would be the transit center, which has been closed to the public for, forever. So there are public toilets there, right across the street from the parking garage. But they have not had, and no one has had access to them. But with specific, um, reference to the porta potties, we did and have put out porta potties, both at the Energy Park and outside the fire station on the parking lot there. Of course, those will eventually have to go away, um, as we begin to use that part, parking lot for the construction of the library. But, um, what happens with the porta potties is, um, they're not used for the purpose that they're supposed to be used in. They are, um, places to go where you want, uh, if you.
Shoot trucks.
Yeah, thank you. There's that, uh, so, uh, that happens. They are used as a place to put trash. So, uh, what happens is we do rent those, those are not city-owned, we do rent them. Jennifer has, uh, Jennifer Hoffman has a very good relationship, uh, with one of the vendors. And, uh, he's at a point where he doesn't want to keep that, uh, porta potty open because when he goes, it's filled with needles, it's filled with trash, it's being ruined. Those are the kinds of situations that I'm not happy to be talking about in public, but that is the situation and the, that we, we do face. So she has, um, attempted, uh, I, I don't want to leave, um, Christie's part in this out, uh, out because the Energy Park is one of the places that we first became aware of the issues, that had kind of spiraled out of, uh, control, as we began to want to use the pub, uh, the Energy Park more publicly for the concerts and so forth. So, um, we've had to lock them and not make them available. The one at the fire station can be made available, they hold, uh, the key to it. They are, they should be opening it in the morning and closing it at about 6:00 PM at night, so. Have we considered it? Yes. Director Hoffman has brought me some really interesting solutions, which I, I won't go into tonight, but I can bring them to you or send them to you before. They are not cheap. They're not something that I can't, I can't call somebody locally and say, would you put a porta, it's called the Portland Lou. Would you put a Portland Lou in two, two or three locations? They're expensive, but they do do the trick and they are designed for just, um, the issues that we are facing. You can s- they offer a certain level of privacy, but you can always tell when somebody's in there. And they, uh, discourage a lot of different kinds of bad behavior other than just using them for, uh, the need to go to the bathroom. So, um, you know, it might, it might be that we, Jennifer will come to you in a capital budget, asking for a couple of those. So just, nothing, nothing that we, this is not a short-term solution, I think, is what I, I'm trying to get across to you this evening. There's not, we can't just go like that and have, uh, this problem resolved within the next couple of weeks.
Okay, Counselor Mayo, go ahead.
I specifically want to talk about, uh, almost every day, uh, in the Greenfield quarter, you, the other day I picked up or I read, uh, there was at least 10 pickups of, of, uh, needles. Conway Street, Wells Street, um, the, um, the park itself, Hillside Park, um, they're everywhere. Almost every, every other sentence is a needle pickup. Do the police still pick up needles exclusively?
I think if they see them, they do. The process has been, I mean, part of why we put the, uh, Sharps containers out in the parks
Right.
is when the public gets them, they should put them in there.
Well.
You know, I mean, I, I wouldn't, I would encourage people to call
Yeah.
as they do, the police department, to come pick up the needle because they are
Right.
protected in order to do that. But if somebody in the public wants to put, pick up a needle for some reason or other and, and does and there's a Sharps container nearby, then that's what they should do, they should put it in there. Tapestry, the deal with this, with Tapestry is that they should be coming around and picking, and checking those boxes regularly.
Well, I mean, the, uh, my walks, I, I, I've been told by the police department to basically, if you see a needle, um, in the road or in the grass as you're, as you're walking, basically call the police and they will come and get it.
Yeah.
There was, it's, uh, they're nowhere near a, a Sharps area. They basically have to pick them up and use, use whatever devices or gloves or whatever. And they exclusively said for me not to pick them up.
That's right.
I was, you know, I've been in the healthcare field for a long time. I know how to handle a needle and could handle it safely and bring it to, um, bring it to a safe location. I know where places do take needles and so that would have been no problem, but I was told exclusively that the police do that. But I'm more concerned with the summer coming here and, uh, kids using the park, using, um, they even use, uh, Art Street as a, uh, as a skate park, kind of, sort of. So there's a lot of use, uh, and there's also trash buildup along between that building there and the railroad. There's a lot of trash buildup that comes down the hill and, uh, always there's needles coming down there with it. So, uh, well, there is, I realize that Greenfield has a, is going to have a slow response on this because of the money issue, but there's also a, a, a great need for safety for the, for the kids who has, who have a summer off and for people who are riding bikes or just walking or, or jogging, doing more jogging, especially after being kept in for 15 months. They're, they want to get out and do regular exercising again and I'm just concerned about the safety of, of those people. So, you know, I'm not complaining about the police department, I know that they have their job to do. I just, I just think it brings, it deserves more media attention than what I'm hearing. You know, and I, it's, and I'm not even saying I'm blaming you, I'm just saying, uh, it's a safety issue in my, in my opinion. It just need, and it needs to be dealt with in a more expedient manner than, than what I anticipate hearing. So.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so I just, Counselor Sorga.
Mayor Weingarten, thank you for that concerted effort. And to all of the departments that were working on that. I, I actually went down to both of the parks today, not to the, not to the parking garage, but, um, this is, it's, it's going to continue. but this is, it's, it's going to continue. And I'm just, I'm grateful that everybody is, from all, Board of Health, I went up and stopped and thanked Christie and Jennifer Hoffman today too, and Director Warner, who's out there. They're anticipating that this will continue. I was just reading a little bit about the rapid recovery, this, the health, there's a big emphasis on that, so maybe thinking, thinking outside of the box, extra money for tapestry health so that they can be, no?
Tapestry is a private organization, I mean, they're not a private organization, they have nothing to do with the city. It'd be the Department, it'd be the Health Department.
Right. So just, just that I'm in favor of continuing to help those, all the extra services as much as we can. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Gwen.
I just want to, Counselor Mayo just made a comment, and I just want to clarify that I think we have to be careful with response and recurrence. I think our response is very good, but we can't help the recurrence. And I think the things that you're starting to do and have been doing to, to look at prevention is going to be helpful, but I have not had one person tell me that you did not respond. What happens is you respond today and tomorrow it's over here and then we have to respond there.
Black and all.
That's a difference than saying we're not responding. So I don't want people to think they're calling in and they're telling me, we saw something at the GTD Park across, you know, on Lamp Black Road or any of those, we saw, and no one comes. I don't think that's happening. The problem is, it's happening at a great pace and reoccurring. So I'm pleased to know we're looking at ways to change that, but I have yet, and if I'm wrong, please people let me know, but I do believe we're responding, it's just hard to stop the recurrence. That's all I wanted to say.
That's correct. That's what I'm saying, it's not something that will be solved overnight. I mean, some of it has to do with the housing issue. People have homes they don't, that they want to go to, then they don't have to be out in the public, sleeping rough.
Thank you. And I wanted to dovetail off of what Counselor Gwen was saying. Just the fact that Counselor Mayo was saying it was in the paper means people have been calling it in, that's why it's in the paper. So I just saw that all as a positive, that people are calling it in, they're going, they're picking it up. You know, the police officer said to him clearly, do not pick it up, let us know and we'll do it. It was good, there's no shades of gray there. They said what to do, people have gotten it, the more that it's in the paper, I think that is education, because other people know, wow, I guess I can call, because look at, they're picking it up. I mean, it hurts my heart when I see it, only because it looks like such a bad part of Greenfield, but it could be so much worse. So I'm glad to know all of this is being done and I know that I've been forwarding lots of emails to you and you've gotten right back to me, you let me know that all the department heads were getting together this week, like that was right away. And so it's been so good that when anybody from the public does come to me or we do get an email, I feel really good to say, like, our department heads do know about this and they have been meeting. And when Counselor Gwen forwarded that picture to me, I sent it right to the mayor and I just said, you know, could you speak on it, you know, at our next council meeting? But it's an unfortunate situation, but as usual, Greenfield is stepping up and we're just working on the problems. And it's important, and listen, we haven't even got to the part yet where they're going to start the invictions and take that part away because of COVID. And so when that starts to happen, there may be some other problems. So let's just keep the positive thoughts out there, people keep calling in and having people, you know, having the police officers, I mean, that even bothers me, I know it's the job they signed up for, but it doesn't make me feel any better that that's where they're using their time
Yeah.
Instead of other things that could be happening. So thank you, thank you for all the emails, thanks for the quick response, thanks to all your department heads who met. I got the list of the dates and times and I wish I could have made them, but I was just so happy to read that and see that it was taken that seriously and things were being done that quickly, so. Thank you so much. So I believe you have more on your list.
I do, and I'm happy to move on. Just a quick note, because, whoops, she's not here. Chair, Chair Poirot did spark my attention with her report on the teachers contract. I just want all of you to know that our union negotiations are going on, they're being conducted largely by Chief of Staff Danny Letourneau for the city and HR Director Diana Letourneau. And they make a great team and they're working very hard. So we are going through all of our union contracts, we have five active now, about to start the police department soon. So I don't have anything major to report to you, if she did, but I realized I'd left it off the list and you might be wondering what's going on. But they are, they're going as well as you might expect. Everybody's still talking to each other. That's a good thing. Legal update, one of the counselors asked for a legal update. I wish I had really specific information for you, some of it, I'll just tell you what I know. Many of our legal cases are still ongoing from the previous administration, we did have a pandemic, we still actually kind of have a pandemic, so the courts haven't been open, there's been a lot of slowness to getting these things resolved. The Brockia, Brockia case has been settled, the city's financial exposure to that was minimal. I don't have an update on the Dan Kelly suit. The Buchanan case is still going on. A recent court date was postponed by the plaintiff himself, or asked to be postponed by the plaintiff himself. Many of our cases are being handled by our insurer, MIA. I never remember what M-I-A stands for, but we do pay them a lot of money every year to handle these cases for them. And we get updates as they have new information, but they've been hampered by the same thing that all the rest of the court cases have been hampered by, or even mediation sessions and so forth. So it's been a little bit slow. So I don't have any updates on the MIA cases right now. If you'll remember, we did have a opioid lawsuit that was signed on to by Mayor Martin. That lawsuit is ongoing, although I did receive this week a recent communication that it may be reaching a settlement in the near future. Now, if you'll remember, that is a class action suit with a lot of different cities. So in speaking to our city attorney, who has been, that has been handed off from Gordon Quinn to Doherty Wallace and Pillsbury and Murphy, the new city attorneys, Gordon Quinn, for your information, continues to be our labor and employment lawyer. So he's handling the negotiation, the city negotiation side and any labor and employment law issues that come up. But when I say reach a settlement, we really, you know, I wouldn't expect a windfall, a lot of people. A lot of city and towns are part of that. We also have various real estate transactions that are in various stages of coming to closing. Those aren't just the fire station, those are various marijuana companies that have come in and want to purchase property, so different real estate transactions that are still going on. There is an outstanding suit that may be new to some of you and not new to others, between Just Roots and Camp Kewahney over use of some of the Just Roots property for parking for Wormtown events. And again, that's moved slowly because, well, Wormtown wasn't having any events, but it looks as if they are ready to move to a memorandum of understanding between the two parties about use of some of the property that Just Roots has control over out in the north part of Greenfield for that. So with completion of that MOU, Camp Kewahney is supposed to then drop their lawsuit against the ZBA. So I don't know if any of you have particular questions about a particular lawsuit, but I don't think I can
Yeah, let's not
Answer any of those at this time. If you do, I'm happy for you to communicate them through President Ricketts or directly to me, and if I can answer them, I will. Court Square, I sent around your drawings, the pilot program for closing off Court Square to vehicle, when I say Court Square, I mean the, the piece of roadway that separates the City Hall from Court Square. If you'll remember, back in 2017, a, a plan, there was a whole process that the city engaged in as to how to make Court Square a more welcoming pedestrian plan, pedestrian place for people to gather and use more like a, you know, a real common. And that's something that I actually think is a really good idea to do to help enhance downtown for a lot of reasons, you know, just a place for people to be able to hang out outside, enjoy the court, Court Square, I go in every morning, I see people using the common, just sitting on the benches, enjoying it, people sitting out front, in front of the City Hall. We would like to make it so that it is more contiguous to the whole City Hall. Using the Rapid Recovery money, that's not the ART money, that's the Rapid Recovery Downtown, they want, it's coming from the city, they want us to use it to enhance our downtown revitalization. So we decided that would be MJ, working with the mayor's office, to do a pilot program to sort of begin to understand how we might put into action the 2017 Court Square renovation. And so to close it off to vehicle traffic. That will begin on Friday and what will happen is at the entrance to Court Square, on the main street side, we will use, what is the word I'm looking for? Jersey barriers, Jersey barriers and the wooden planters. This has all been vetted by the police department and the fire department, it will not be closed off permanently to emergency vehicles by any stretch, everything is movable. And then the opposite end at Newell Court, that's the only place. But in order to do that, we are going to have to route traffic into the City Hall parking lot. So that has, that drawing, I'm sorry, it's as rough as it is, but will show you what will happen, starting Friday at 7:00 AM, they will begin to close off both of those ends and they will begin to re-stripe the Bank Row and Newell Court, or Newell Place, I forget what it's called for sure, for the entrance to the church, the funeral home and the City Hall parking lots. So just if you see people out there working, that's what they're doing, if you get, particularly those of you who represent areas closer to downtown, if you, if you feel questions, that's, that's what's happening. It'll give us an opportunity to see the validity of doing that and to gather some information and it's not coming at a huge cost to us, so. And we have grant money to cover it, so just letting you know that. Lastly, I'd like to address Director Gilman's recent communication to you about the assessor's office and some concerns expressed by some counselors. I'd simply like you to focus on her main message, which is to please reach out to the assessor, to Chief Assessor Mu with any questions you have about an issue brought to you by a constituent in order to understand why a certain assessment was done the way it was, rather than to assume that the information that you have from your constituents is 100% accurate. It may be, and she may be able to answer the questions to you about that, but I don't want you to immediately assume that it was done incorrectly. And discuss it at a public meeting without the benefit of having Chief Assessor Mu explain to you what happened with that particular thing. So it is always better to give your constituents accurate information and if President Ricketts will indulge me for a few more minutes
Yes.
I would like to ask Chief Assessor Mu to address you directly. I believe that you owe that to her, to listen to her directly.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me tonight. I want to briefly discuss some of the things that have been happening in the assessor's office. I first want to remind you, in order to become an assessor, you have to pass eight classes. And these classes are designed by the DOR, the MAAO, which is the Massachusetts Assessors Association, and the IAAO, which is the International Assessors Association. Once you've completed these classes, you have to maintain the credits to keep your designation. And in order to do that, you need to attend meetings, seminars and other classes. This allows you to keep up with new rules, laws and regulations. On top of all of that, all assessor's offices are monitored by the DOR every year. Before our tax rate is set, before our values can be approved, the DOR completes an extensive analysis of our work. If they see something that they feel doesn't look right, they ask, what's going on? For example, there was a sale of 17, of 17 million dollars, but the assessment of one particular property was only $3,500. So they'll come to me and say, what's going on here? Is this an arms-length sale? Something else happening here, et cetera? When multiple properties are sold together, which is what I'm referring to in this example, there were five parcels. I can't value one parcel of land at the sale price of five. That's not an arms-length sale. I can't pick out that particular value out of that 17 million dollars. Some other examples that were mentioned in the letter that you received from Liz Goman was a property that a house was demolished. There was a building, a property that had a building on it that was rapidly diminishing. These are things the DOR see too. And they're going to ask us about these things. Why did this value drop tremendously? Well, the house was demolished, it's just land now. I'm completely disheartened by the things that have been presented. The things that the assessor's office are being accused of are completely impossible. When the DOR is looking through our data, whether it's a revaluation year or whether it's our yearly certification, if they for one minute thought that we were giving people a deal because their last name ends in a vowel, or anybody for that matter, that's special treatment. If a board member, if they thought a board member was influencing the assessor's office and how they value their properties, the office would be under the most extreme intense investigation. And if the DOR found that these things were actually happening, the board member, the assessor, the contractor, the administrative clerk, anybody that was associated with the assessor's office the administrative clerk, anybody that was associated with the assessor's office would lose their job, never be able to get a municipal job ever again. They'd lose their license that they may have, it may be an appraisal license. They'd lose their certificate of, to be the chief assessor. Think about this for a minute. Do you think that it's worth losing absolutely everything to give somebody a deal? I don't. Put yourself on the other side of this situation. Put yourself in my place. Maybe it's not the assessor's office, maybe it's a retail store, maybe it's a museum or a school. You're proud of what you've done, you're proud of, of the accomplishments that you've made. You're, you're working every day, and you're happy to be at your job. Your coworkers, your boss, they tell you you're doing well. You get calls and emails and people coming in, letters in the mail, saying that, thank you for what you've done, you've, you're very helpful, your office has really done us well. And then someone says, oh, the assessor's office has no idea what they're doing. They're just making things up. They're giving people deals based on who they are. What if you work in a school system and someone says, well, that teacher treats my kid awful, don't put your kid in that class, but you know that you've done everything that you can to treat everyone well, and you care very much about all of your students? What if you own your own business? And someone says, oh, I went there and their food sucked and it was dirty, and so people stop going because that's what you said, or that's what she said? You lose your, your business. That doesn't feel well, just by hearsay. How does that feel if you think about your job and being beat up like that? Put yourself in my shoes for a minute. Hear what has been said about the assessor's office, me, my coworkers. It doesn't feel well. With all that being said, I want you to know that I'm still happy to work with you. I want to help you understand what the assessor's office does. I'm happy to show you that these accusations are absolutely impossible. If you have questions about a property, if someone has brought you a concern, please put in a public records request, come talk to me. Talk to President Ricketts, have her talk to me. Don't go through your friends, your family members. Do it yourselves. You're representing the city of Greenfield. Please be honest with me, because you want me to be honest with you, and that is my job. As of today, no one has reached out to me about any of the issues that have been brought up. And I just wanted you all to know that. Please also know that when you're asking for something that I tell you that I can't provide you, it's not because I'm hiding something, it's not because I don't want to give it to you. It's because, if, if it's a report potentially, it doesn't exist in the CAMA system, and in order to have it exist, I have to create, I have to get money and give it to the company to make this report. We don't have that. It might be because it's an application that's not available to the public by law. I'm not trying to hide anything from you. And my job as the assessor is not to care who lives where. It's to care about what is on the parcel of land that I'm assessing, whether it be vacant, whether it have multiple buildings, whether it have one. I don't care who lives there. So. I want to talk more about this in July, when we can have a meeting and actually go over record cards and talk about specific issues that have been brought up at council meetings. But if you have a property or a situation that you would like me to address, please, please let me know prior. Let me know in a situation that I have the ability to respond to you. Please don't assume that what I'm doing is wrong, that what RRG is doing is wrong, because they own a company too. They have a business, they care about their job, their communities. They care about the people in their communities, just as much as I do. So please let me know ahead of time if there are things that you would like to address in July. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Stempel. Ray.
I just want to thank you for coming here and speaking before us. I have had the pleasure for the last six years of I've served the council to watch you grow in your role. And I don't try, I'm not trying to be paternalistic, I'm just saying that I've watched you grow in your role. And it's culminating here, and I'm very happy to have you here. I don't want to say sticking up for yourself, but educating. And so thank you for your willingness to continue educating, because even when you were newer in your role, that was what you did excellent, was educating. So I just wanted to thank you, and I know it's hard, so thank you.
I appreciate that.
Are there any other questions or comments? Well, I too want to join Counselor Stempel in thanking you for coming before us, because I do think it's difficult to come before council. And after the budget meeting and stuff, I know I expected a resignation. And so I am happy that you're here, and it happens to all of us. I mean, look at the discussion tonight, just about drug and needle use. That is going to be a big reflection on the council, whether people on this council know it or not, because it's going to look like it is us, and it's our fault, it's our city. And so I get exactly your point. And so thank you for being here, and thank you for not, like, punching back during the budget or doing anything. I mean, you could have just shut off your camera and said, I don't want to. But no, you stayed professional, and that's important. And it's, and it's hard, and we all need to always stay professional.
Thank you.
So thank you. Anyone else? Mayor, are you?
At last.
This is good, it's the first time I didn't shut you down at all.
No, I know, and I appreciate that, I really do appreciate the counselor's time this evening. We all have really hard jobs. We are in the eye of the public, and I appreciate that about each and every one of you, the willing to be out there and be in the eye of the public. So just understand that, and we just all have hard jobs to do, but we continue to do them, just like Assessor Mu. Thank you, it's great.
Okay, Counselor Forgé.
Oh.
Are you on?
One more, more question, Mayor, could you update us, please, on the progress of the library?
Maybe, because I don't want to. We're kind of in that place where we are waiting, because it's tied to the fire station, we are, and the temporary fire station going up, and I'm, if none of you have been on Hope Street, you should take a look, because it's pretty over, it's not overwhelming, it's pretty massive to see those fires, temporary buildings. But we are at that point where we're just waiting for the temporary buildings for the fire station to be completed. That's going on very well. I will say that some of the things that we talked about with regard to the issues around parks are complicated, because a lot of different DPW staff and central maintenance staff are assisting in getting those temporary libraries, temporary fire station buildings put up. So this is not a, it feels like I'm not updating you about the library, but I am. So we have the design, we have the contractor, those, that's another piece of the legal documents that have been going back and forth. Our lawyer has reviewed the contractor's contract, and I have sent it to the OPM, Dan Palata, with his changes, so I'm just awaiting the contractor's okay on those before I sign that. And then we will have the contractor in place on the library, and as we're getting those temporaries up as fast as we can. Still targeting mid-August, like, the week of the 15th, for a groundbreaking on the library. And then somewhere between the 15th of August and the beginning of September, hopefully more like the end of August, they can begin demolishing the library, because the fire station, the Fire Department has been able to move into the temporary buildings, so. Was that what you were looking for, more or less?
Just the progress.
Yeah, yeah.
I think you meant demolish the fire station, not the library.
Not the library, you're right. I mean, you do have, you do have the thing on, I mean, if you have any questions, before I sign off, if you have any, if you have any questions with regard to the sale of 402 Main Street, which I think you're going to authorize me to at least begin that process, I'm happy to answer those as best I can. Or I'm, if, when you come to that, if you have questions for me, I'm sticking around, I'm not going anywhere.
Okay, thank you so much, thank you for.
And again, thank you.
Thank you for all your time, and thank God for email, so. Okay. Okay, Clerk Scott, would you like to?
I just wanted to mention to anyone in the public, any voter in Greenfield, that nomination papers are still available. If you want to come in and take them out and run for public office.
Okay. Okay, so the next one is motions, orders, and resolution. Oh yeah, public comment. I'm so sorry about this. I didn't see anyone, so I forget this. All right, did you guys want to sign up and talk, or no? Are you sure? Okay. All right. Motions, orders, and resolutions. So the first one. Would someone like to read that, it's on page 23? Okay, we have no public hearings and no second readings tonight. So. If anybody's prepared to read it, that would be. And then after this will be Counselor Gwen with a lot of his appointments, so. All right. I'll give you guys another moment.
Would you like me to read it, I've got it up here on the screen.
Please, oh, thank you so much, Counselor Gilmore, Vice President Gilmore.
Am I starting at the heading, or do you want me to just read the resolution itself? Okay. The City Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfields, Greenfield City Council approves the attached resolution titled "A Resolution Concerning Racism, Inclusion, and Equity in the City of Greenfield." Do you want me to read the whole thing, or is that good?
No, no, that's fine, we just need the motion, and do we have a second? Okay. Okay, so in front of you is something that I had worked on. I'm not making a motion, but this is my suggestion, or my recommendation. As a person of color, what I would be in favor of, because I was here through the whole safe city, and then when racist acts happened to me, I wrote a piece, and it actually got written up, and it now hangs in City Hall. And so I feel like we've done so much work in this area already. And so for me, what I'd like to say is, "The resolution concerning racism, inclusion, and equity in the city of Greenfield, whereas racism unfairly disadvantaged specific individuals and communities while unfairly given advantages to other individuals and community; whereas racism is a root cause of poverty, injustice restricts economic mobility; whereas racism causes persistent discrimination and disparate outcomes in many areas of life, including housing, education, employment, criminal justice, in itself a social detriment of health." Then I want to skip down to, "Whereas racism and segregation have excavated a health divide resulting in people of color in Massachusetts bearing a disproportionate burden of illness and mortality, including COVID-19, infection and death, heart disease, diabetes, and infant mortality." Then I want to skip down to, "Whereas Black, Native American, Asian, and Latino residents are more likely to experience poor health outcomes as a consequence of inequities in economic stability, education, physical environment, food, and access to health care, and these inequities are themselves a root of racism. Whereas the collective prosperity and well-being of Greenfield depends upon town leaders confronting racism while committing to policy, and the system changes." And then. All right. On the back, the only sentence is in the second paragraph, and it's only a portion of it. And it's number two, "Promote equity through addressing and dismantling racism and how it affects the delivery of human and social services, economic development, and public safety." Just my recommendation. Counselor Gwen, and then Counselor Hirschfeld.
Counsel, President Ricketts, I'm not sure how you want to handle this. I would, I would bring forward the motion as you recommend, recommended it, if that's what you're looking for in order of discussion. Or do we want to discuss the motion? Because I have no, you know, you don't bring forward motions, we do, but I would bring forward that motion if that's what you'd like to do, as read.
Counselor Gwen, motion, but is there a second? Second, but Counselor Stempel, Ray. Okay, Counselor Hirschfeld, and I'll open it up for discussion, go ahead.
Yes, just a point of order, did this go through A and O at all?
The original motion was brought up at A and O and was asked to move forward to full counsel without recommendation.
No discussion?
Correct.
They, the person who brought it forward did not want it, they wanted it to come to full counsel.
And I can give a little bit of background on that, just so you know. There were questions on the overreaching nature of the original proposal on departments that aren't under our recommendation, Department of, State Department of Education, the, you know, the executive side of legislature. So there were going to be questions, so we asked to move it to a future meeting in order to get those questions answered, and it was asked for us not to make a recommendation to get it here sooner, so we sent it on without any recommendations, as requested. So there is no discussion.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Forgé.
So I'm a bit confused, there was a motion and a second on the original petition.
No, on, on what I read.
No, wasn't there something made by Counselor Gilmore, seconded by Counselor Mayo on this original paperwork? So what, I guess I need some clarification, is what you read, an amendment to this motion? Okay, as an amended amendment to the motion. Thank you.
So the amended motion is now on the table. The amended motion is now on the table.
Thank you very much for the clarification.
It did have a first and a second, it has not been voted on yet.
Okay, thank you.
Any, anyone else? Counselor Stempel, Ray.
I don't typically love taking other people's words and then putting them as my own. However, your amendment makes me more comfortable taking the words and putting it forward. I think it, it gets more closely to how I think I would see it moving forward. So with your amendments, I would be happy to support this.
Thank you. Counselor Omar.
Um, I'm not crazy about this kind of motion. I, I sort of ran against what I called feel-good measures that make the town feel bad. I think some of the elements that would have made the town feel bad have been taken out. I'm a little, I wonder whether the committee that put it forward would endorse your edit. Um, is, is Pete Brown here by any chance? No.
No, um, he didn't, um, come to A and O either. Um, and that was another reason I wanted to be on, is because of the head, the heading of where it came from. That was problematic for me as well because we are a nonpartisan board. That's how we run in the city, so.
I'll just add that the one thing that seemed to have teeth in the original motion was a create a diverse citizen oversight review board. Uh, and I, I don't know if you all know this, but that is part of the, the charter revision committee's recommendation that there would be a citizen review board. So anyway, that's taken out of this.
Right. And thank you for that. So the reason why that was so easy for me to take that part out is because Counselor Forgie is actually writing the new public safety piece of the charter and the citizens' review, review board is part of it. So it is not, um, going away, but it's going to be part of a, this is a resolution. What Counselor Forgie's doing is charter or, uh...
Ordinance.
Ordinance, thank you. I don't mean to stare, I'm just looking for hands. Um, Counselor Jarvis, there you go. Thank you. I knew I could see somebody moving.
Directly across from you.
I know it did.
I'd just like to say that, um, yeah, I, I will be voting in favor of this since it's been edited out. Um, a lot of the original document, um, were items that are being acted on or have already been acted on. I too felt that the previous city council spent a lot of time on resolutions and stuff like that when, when the, um, business of the city got put off to the side. So, um, I'm glad to see that we're going to be moving forward quickly on this. So I will be voting in favor of this. Um, and I just want to explain like my action last month about table in this without, um, any discussion. My one concern about, about this document was that resolutions can be binding the way that they're written, written. And I wanted the city to look into and have our attorney look into to make sure that this wasn't a binding resolution. Because when you vote on resolutions, there's five or six definitions of resolutions out there throughout the state, as Clerk Scott forwarded them all to me, and none of them concluded that none, that they are not binding. So I wanted to get a little ruling on this before the city council addressed it. Um, and if I explained myself that night, we aired, then that meant that it was open for discussion. And so I just wanted to explain my actions last month at the city council. That's why I did what I did. So I wanted to make sure that this was not going to be a binding resolution, that it was just a resolution. So, just to clarify that.
Counselor Gilmore and Counselor Stempore.
I appreciate Counselor Jarvis explaining that because I thought all of our resolutions were by nature non-binding resolutions in this group. Is that not correct?
So it depends on, sorry, um, it depends on a lot of things in the resolution and we didn't have, and we still don't have a legal opinion on whether it would have been binding or non-binding. But the question was asked of me by a few counselors, whether it was or was not binding. I couldn't say 100% sure whether it was or wasn't. So that was...
Okay. Yeah, and I just wanted to close with, you know, um, so it sounds like most folks are in favor of this amendment, so I would be happy to see that forward because I feel like this has been languishing for an awful long time, given that it's, you know, just a resolution. Um, but I think that the person who wrote this had a different intent than what is here. So, um, so I kind of have mixed feelings about that, but I'm happy to have this not be like pushed back another month because I feel like we've had this for a long time.
Counselor Stempore.
Because we are voting on this as a party, are we privy to know who submitted this? I know we keep saying that person, that person, that person, but...
Pete, Pete Brown sent it, but Counselor Wheeler took it because somebody has to sponsor it. And so Counselor Wheeler's sponsoring it and then it went to A and O, but then he wanted it just sent right to council and he wanted it sent to council the night we did the budget votes. And I think it, it might be, and I don't know, is because we were voting on the police things that night, and there's police portions in here as well.
I was just, so Pete Brown wrote this?
Originally, I'm not, I don't go, does somebody, Counselor DeSorga maybe, or somebody was at that meeting?
So, yeah, it came from the Democratic Town Committee, so I believe it was, I believe it was Rudy Reno who had submitted it to the group. And then it was discussed at, you know, for a long time during that night.
That's my understanding also.
Because, because if, yeah, on the bottom of this resolution, it says his name.
He's the, he's the chair though, and that's why he would have submitted it.
Okay. So it might have been Counsel, past President Reno who originally wrote it, okay. And she didn't come forward to A and O either, but did I see another hand or Counselor Gwynne?
I just want to come back with a couple of points of clarification even from, um, earlier on. There, when we originally tried to discuss this at A and O, um, there was a motion that was voted but then never came forward to say that it was coming from the Greenfield Town City Council and not from the Greenfield Democratic Town Committee when you asked if there was anything we discussed. One of the initial things was, how do we bring forward a resolution from the council that's coming from a separate entity? You know, it, it didn't say coming from the Greenfield Town, City Council, it said coming from the Greenfield Democratic Town Committee, which was already an issue for some of us. So that we tried to change, but it was never really voted on and then it didn't come forward. And then second of all, um, I was in agreement with Counselor Jarvis originally on the binding words versus that because it has little to do with the front page and more to do with the second page, which were action steps. There were four, uh, action steps that called for very specific things to happen, which I had a problem with because they're not in our purview. We can't, you know, change the, the Department of Education, uh, you know, or, or make recommendations for the, for the state of Massachusetts, which this almost implied. And then we can't, you know, we could say as a city council that we, we would like to do pieces of this, but we really can't instruct the executive side to change things in these four pieces. So by making this a well-intended, uh, piece of resolution to say we're in support of it, those action things were the things that were being, um, challenged more than the idea of having a resolution on racism. And, and that's what bogged it down, was where the call of action was coming and did it bind us to something. That's all been eliminated by this resolution, uh, by this, um, amended version that Counselor Ricketts, uh, brought forward, who I, um, agreed to, um, make a motion for discussion, but I will be supporting that motion that I brought forward also.
And I, and I do believe, and I'm not 100% sure, that this might have gone to the school committee as well, and I've been attending all their meetings and it hasn't even come up for discussion there. And the back page is, has to do with the schools. So that was the other part that felt kind of odd to me that we should try to do this when we're not really in charge of the schools, that they should be able to make that decision themselves. So, are there any other questions or comments? I'm just feeling the horse has just one last breath, so we've beat that one to death. So are we ready to take a vote on the amended? All right, so, oh, we're not on Zoom. All in favor?
Aye.
We might, aye, aye. On the amendment. Um, no, if you could raise your hand for Kathy. Abstain? You, okay, so, thank you. Okay, so now we'll vote on the motion as in your packet. Hmm?
No, we voted on the amended, so...
Didn't we just do that?
Yes.
You just amended the motion. Now you're going to vote on the motion as amended.
Yes.
Now, vote, let's vote on the motion as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All oppose? Abstain. Counselor Elmer, thank you so much. Okay. Now, all right, let's move on. Counselor, yeah, page twenty-seven. Anyone can take this one, actually.
I've got it if you need it.
Okay.
I move that it be ordered that in accordance with Greenfield Home Rule Charter, Section 2-8B, the Greenfield City Council reelects Catherine J. Scott as city clerk for a term of three years, effective July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2024.
Okay. Like second, perfect, first and a second, Mayo. Any questions or comments? Counselor DeSorga.
I heartily endorse this. I think you're doing a fantastic job. Thank you.
Thank you, yes. Anyone else? Counselor Forgie.
Yes, I want to echo what Counselor DeSorga said and also, um, I'm on a different, I'm on a different side of the table at this point. So I don't think I've ever had a really great appreciation of what happens in the clerk's office in regards to council business. And so I'd just like to thank you, Kathy, for the hard work that you've done. Um, you've always been professional, you've always been polite and taken the time, even though I call you like three times for a password change. But I do appreciate it and I do want to say thank you very much and I'm happy to see that you are up for reappointment. Thank you.
And before we vote, I want to say that Clerk Scott was at a conference as well as on vacation and she took all my calls. And sometimes it was eight o'clock at night, but City Hall, um, great, great staff. She had a great staff. She didn't really have to worry at all. So I just worried for her and called, but she responded. She ran out of the conference to take a quick call and I'm telling you, if anybody could even imagine what the last two weeks were like, um, I, I owe everything to the clerk's office, all of them. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstain?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you all for your praise. Every single one of you knows that it's the staff in my office that make it go. That's all I have.
Okay, so, you ready, Counselor Gwynne?
I move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council pursuant to Charter, Section 2-10 affirms the following appointments and reappointments by the mayor. Conservation Commission, Kristen McDonough, term expires December 31st, 2022, remaining portion of Jonathan Griffin's term. Cemetery Commission, Erin Bohannon, term expires June 30th, 2024. Council on Aging, Margot Peck, term expires December 31st, 2022, short-term to maintain term schedule. Sustainable Greenfield Implementation Committee, M.J. Adams, term expires June 30th, 2024, reappointment.
Second, Jarvis.
Second, Jarvis. Want me to do them all now? Okay. Any questions or comments?
Would you like recommendation from the committee?
Please.
Um, this was a positive unanimous recommendation for reaffirmation.
All right, good deal. All in favor?
Aye.
All oppose? Take it away.
A point of, point of order before we move on, I thought, and I'm, I'm fine with this for tonight, but I thought we had agreed that we were going to break these out because sometime in the past, there was a counselor who had a problem with one of the appointments and we were going to take them on individually.
We can go ahead and do that if you'd like.
We don't, we don't have to do it tonight, but I just wanted to point that out.
Well, we were just talking about it, but he read them all together, so it was like, okay, let's just do it.
Oh, I was reading, I was reading your mind. That's what it was.
Um, who has a question?
Point of order. Yeah, Counselor Gwynne, because of that issue, uh, asked that if there was any, a problem with any of the people that you should contact him. Because nobody did, uh, he read them all together. It seemed appropriate.
Thank you, Counselor Elmer, that is correct. We, we had decided that, um, if there was no objections to any, we'd read a complete list at the meetings. If anyone prior to the meeting had concerns, I would find the answer, uh, to those concerns and then take that out or move it around if need be.
Okay, thank you. You're awesome. Counselor Gwynne, you're up again, right?
Yes. Um, let me see which way, I'll read it from here. Move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council pursuant to Charter, Section 2-10, affirms the following appointment by the mayor to the Greenfield Montague Transportation Authority, Danielle Leturno, for a term successor qualified. This was also a positive recommendation, unanimous.
Thank you. All in favor?
Can I?
Whoop, questions or comments? Sorry.
Yeah, thank you. What does a term successor qualified mean?
Um, Mayor Weidergard?
It means you're there and figure that. And that just means they're all, we, we, go by the sex, remember that exists on that committee are all successor qualified. It just means that they don't have specific terms. It's a relic. The NTA is a relic. And with the, uh, it's there to do the business of the garage of Greenfield Street that is owned by the, and leased by the, and when they move in the very near future, within the year, sometime maybe by next year, when their garage and turnus balls get built, there will be no need for this. So it's just a way of saying, these are the people, it's two people from Montague, it's two people from Greenfield, Angela, Angela DeRochers, the, um, our city accountant, but she's also the finance person for the junior P.A. for Greenfield. And then there was a vacant position that I assume must have been held by Mark Smith, but I don't know that for a fact. I think it was vacant when I got there. So I made that assumption. And it didn't cross my path until I learned that they were moving very quickly on getting the new garage done because that sort of languished for a while too. So, um, we need a corresponding person to mark from the city of Greenfield and it fell naturally to, to disfigure it. Montague has their city managers, the Vellas, and their accountant person, um, and so successor qualified, I mean, they're just, they don't, they're not normal like the rest of these, they have, they don't have three-year terms, they're just there until they're not committed anymore.
Thank you. That was way more than I needed.
Don't ask me why. I'll be, I'll, I'll, I know a lot. Because I had to find all that out too.
Thank you. So, any questions or comments? Um, why do they, why is I going to say Dr. Mayo? Counselor Mayo?
I do have a doctor in the house. My uncle's a doctor. Um, just a, a simple question, Mayor.
Just a simple question, Mayor. Do you think that there's, not that I think it myself, but is there any conflict of interest with her, her current job that she's doing?
Not really. Like I say, it's not any, they don't, they do business once a year. And that's to.
GMTA.
Yeah, the GMTA. They do business once a year.
Okay.
And that is to affirm their budget. They have a meeting set up for January 8th, and use, I think it's July, as people use the floor. And they have to reaffirm their budget and financial.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions. Okay, thank you. That passed. So, Counselor Forgé, page 36.
Order number fiscal, fiscal year 21-106. The city council, upon recommendation of Mayor Wiedegardner, an order to transfer fiscal year 21 General Fund Department budgets, $10,000. Ordered that the sum of $10,000 be transferred from the following fiscal year 21 account, Medicare payroll tax, $10,000. Total, $10,000. To the following fiscal year 21 accounts as follows, 01001580.5318. Tax title filings, $6,000. Short-term interest, $4,000, for a total of $10,000. Majority vote required. Madam Chairman, this has come straight to council floor. It did, it was, we did not hold a Ways and Means meeting this month.
Okay, does anyone second this? Counsel by DeSorga. Okay, any questions or comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Okay, passes. Counselor Forgé, page 38.
Order number fiscal year 21-107. The city council, upon recommendation of Mayor Wiedegardner, an order to transfer between General Fund Department budgets, $10,000. Ordered that the sum of $10,000 be transferred from fiscal year 21 Energy Department accounts as follows, 01001970.521112. High School Electric, $10,000. Total, $10,000. To the following fiscal year 21 legal accounts as follows, 01001510.5302. Town Attorney, $10,000. Total, $10,000. Majority vote required.
Okay, Hank Gilmore? Any questions? Yeah, Counselor Mayo.
I'm, maybe just, I may be a little confused here. It says, high school electric, $10,000, and then, and a little further down it says town attorney. It makes it look like each of them are getting $10,000.
No, it's a, it's a transfer. One line is being credited, the other's being debited.
Got it. Okay, thank you. I just need to clarify.
All right. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain? Okay. Counselor DeSorga?
Order number F121-101. The city council, upon recommendation of Mayor Wiedegardner, that, that it be ordered that the city council vote to accept a gift of land from Edith D. Harris, trustee of Harris Living Trust of Greenfield, R23-53, as described in the proposed boundary line agreement, and released between the city of Greenfield and Edith D. Harris, trustee of the Harris Living Trust of Greenfield, owner of the premises known as 24 Arbor Drive, Greenfield, Massachusetts. Majority vote required.
Second, Forgé.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, this received a unanimous positive recommendation from the Economic Development Committee.
Do counselors have any questions?
Maybe.
Counselor Gwynn?
Maybe just a quick summary of what this is all about, Counselor DeSorga, just.
The, there is, and Director Warner can help me with this if he so chooses, but there was a utilities, or a right-of-way that crossed at the end of the property, and so the citizen came forward and offered to donate that land. I don't know, do you have further questions for Director Warner?
I don't think, you know, I'm good. I just wanted to kind of get a quick.
So basically, they're giving it to us so they don't have to pay taxes on it? Is there any more discussion or other questions? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so can we move on?
Order number FY21-105. The city council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council declares real estate at 402 Main Street, being shown on assessors map 56 lot 2-0, to be surplus property, and transfer said property to the mayor for sale. Majority vote required.
Second, Mayo.
This is a, this is a two-part motion, and this received a unanimous positive recommendation from Economic Development. The first part being that we have to declare that the real estate to be surplus property, and that said property can, that we can say that it's for sale.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments? And the mayor is still here, so. Counselor Forgé, Counselor Elmer.
Microphone.
I should put on my loud voice. Mayor, this is on the historic register. Will there be any commitments on the deed that is transferred to the buyer? That they have to keep it in historic preservation?
As far as I know, yes. That would be, it would be part of the RFP, so that would be a notification to the buyer. So that would be, that's what they apply, and what those actions are. Probably deserves a little further study on how the part of the mayor's office, what we do with RFP, how to write it, and some of the acquisitions stays.
Thank you. Counselor Elmer, go ahead.
Thank you. Mayor, it's my understanding that you have a potential buyer lined up, but that you're not prepared to tell us who it is?
A little bit of both of them, I think. There is someone who has expressed a strong interest in the building, that might be, would be a, would someone who would want to sell that, or while, you know, some of the others mentioned, in terms of preserving the building, and bringing it, bringing it up where it needs to be. But it would not be in the grand scheme of having to go out to bid, or having to put it up for auction. It would not be fair to name a particular buyer, because that buyer has to then participate in the sale of the property, just like everybody else.
Right.
Maybe they can respond, or choose not to respond. And we will just put forth any information that we have on the property. I think I indicated in my memo, too, that right now we know about the, over $400,000. I think it's roughly $400,000 in repairs.
Can I follow up?
Yes.
Part of the RFP, available to any interested buyer.
Do you have more questions? Maybe the mayor would want to move to the mic than if you have more.
This, this, I, I can hear you, just one, but if it, if it's up for RFP, then it doesn't necessarily go to the buyer who's expressed interest. It could go to, yeah. Yet the, the historic preservation requirements would be, would, would remain in place no matter who bought it.
Counselor Semper Ray, and then Counselor Mayo.
Just a general question, when a town, and maybe this is for Director Gilman, but when a town property is sold, where, does that money fall into free cash? Where does that go?
It go, it goes into a revolving fund sale of real estate, and it has to go to capital projects. And so we would have to go, come back to you and say, yes, we want to use this amount for this project. So.
Counselor Mayo.
Thank you, President. I don't think so. My question is, is very simple. Because of the historical nature of this building, has the, has the historical commission of, of the city been brought in on this for any discussion?
Not at this time. I'm, I'm not sure that they really need to be. I mean, I mean, other than if, just as a way for them to weigh in on it.
Right.
Again, all you're doing tonight is authorizing me.
Right.
Sell this building.
Right.
In some fashion, so just waiting for that to decide the process that goes on. We know we have to do one of two things. That's to go either through an RFP process, or it could go to an auction process. But either way, we would ask for their input.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Jarvis.
Thank you. I just want to make, make clarification. I believe that I'm right on this. Once it's on the national historical list, it stays on the national historical list, no matter who buys the property, no matter whose hands it's in. So it may be a moot point to, to put, it's a good thing to put it in the RFP, but it, once it's on the national registry, it's on the national registry. So that can kind of like make everybody feel at ease that they're not going to demo the building, they have to keep it historically correct, they have to make sure that all the windows that are in place right now are the windows that they redo, doesn't matter what it was built with. So they, they're pretty particular.
Yeah, it, it, and it governs, that only governs the facade. What happens on the interior, unfortunately, it's been through many iterations, so most of the original interior in that building doesn't exist.
Okay, thank you. So, should I call for a vote, or should we wait till Liz gets back to her seat? Just kidding. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions?
Order, order number FY1-105A2. City council, upon recommendation of Mayor Wiedegardner, that it be ordered, that it be ordered that the city council vote to authorize the mayor to begin, to begin seeking a buyer for 402 Main Street, the existing Greenfield Public Library property, based on the city of Greenfield standard operating procedure RE0001-03-M, policy on sale, lease, or option of city-owned land.
Second, Jarvis.
This received, this also received a unanimous positive recommendation from the Economic Development Committee.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. So. Presentations of petitions and similar papers, seeing none. Report of committees, would any committee like to report at this time? Counselor Gwynn?
Seeing my committee has probably got the most attention of recent, I just thought I'd give some updates on a couple of things. One is, there was a lot of misinformation bouncing around in our city about the charter and how it's handled. The A&amp;O committee simply, at this point, went through the procedure of accepting the committee report, so we could then disseminate it, go through it, put it on ballots, make sure we write ordinances, all of that has to happen. But in order for that to happen, my committee has to accept it. The committee says, we've worked on this for a year, here you go. And we say, thank you, now our work starts. That's all we've done. There's been no votes, there's been no accepting of any of the recommendations. All we did was accept the report from the charter commission. We also thanked them for all of their work. It, it's a massive undertaking with representation from the mayor's office, the public, the council. We had three counselors involved in this. That's all we have done. So contrary to any other messages, phone calls, contacts that you have received, all we've done is say, thank you for your work, now we go to work. So, let me clarify that. I have met with the city clerk to make sure that I understand the procedures of each portion to bring that forward to this committee and to the public. I will follow the timeline as established in our charter and state mandate to ensure that we follow the procedure to get this to the state for then it to be approved by the governor in the end. Many steps have to happen in that interim. First of all, we have to come as a council to a consensus that we want to put it forward in whatever form that may be. Simple vote, could be a ballot question, could be many, but we put that forward, piece by piece. Then the mayor has to accept it, okay? If the mayor doesn't accept it, it still does not go on to the governor, because the, the council and the mayor, they both have to agree on the changes to go forward, or they will not be voted on by the legislature, the state. So, we are going to follow those procedures. Some things will be happening. There will be a community, yeah, there will be a public hearing, thank you, from the community to go over pieces of this that need that input. There will be other procedures. We will talk about them here at this council meeting. There'll also be pieces that go forward to A&amp;O for discussion before they come to the full body. We are on it. Rest assured that everyone will know each step of the way as we move forward. I'm working directly with Counselor Forgé, who is drafting some of the pieces that will be brought forward. I've talked to Counselor Wheeler, who will be drafting some of the pieces to come forward. They worked on it with Counselor Gilmore. So we, we have a good handle on getting this brought forward within the timelines, which give us a timeline where we're supposed to have this all done. There are some things that Clerk Scott is checking to make sure our timelines are correct and that we're following the procedure as outlined by Mass State law. So that's where we are right now, and I will have future updates, both at A&amp;O and this council floor, to let you know how we're proceeding. Each portion of this recommendation will be looked at and brought forward by the council and the committee. Some things, if you read this, if anyone has not yet read this document. Some things, if you read this, if anyone has not yet read this document that was forwarded to you, it is very thorough in the explanations on the bottom to tell you that there was no recommendation made. It tells you the public brought it forward. All of those recommendations are right here, and I believe we have a good concept and a working calendar to bring this forward to the full council. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Counselor, I knew it, Counselor Elmer.
I'd just like to add that I was given the advice that if you don't have time to read every word of it, make sure you read the footnotes. It's all in the footnotes.
Excellent, and that is true. That's what we said at committee level. Those footnotes tell the story.
Right, that's true. Counselor Gilmore?
So I just want to say, for those of you who have not read the charter yet, it is quite a page-turner. If you have trouble sleeping, this is a good read for you right before bed.
Does anyone else have any, oh, Counselor Disorga? Okay, please.
Amongst our work, members of Economic Development are voluntarily going out and introducing themselves to the new business owners, welcoming them to town. This is something that Economic, the Department of Economic Development has also been doing. And I would just like to say that the business owners themselves that I have spoken with have, were very pleased by that one-on-one contact. They also complimented the Economic Development Department of Greenfield and how they helped them to get through the recovery, but they were very pleased with that. I've done seven myself, and I just want to tell you that that was something that we're doing as a group.
Thank you. So I would just like to dovetail off of that, Counselor Disorga, and while the mayor is still here, that I am so thankful about the outdoor dining and everything that went in place to put all of that together, because over this Father's Day, and well, throughout the year and stuff, things are really picking up, and it was just so wonderful to see all the places pretty full. And then, when it comes to your idea about the common, I was in Magpie the other day, and they were totally packed, and there was a party of seven behind me, and they said, we'll still order everything, and we'll just go sit on the common and eat it.
Yeah, and I just wanted to mention what I was talking about that, because I was wanting to, you know, I just, I didn't get it off.
You're going to have to go to the mic, because this is being recorded.
I neglected to mention, in that court square piece, as part of my discussions with you folks, that we have ordered tables for the, for the area in front of the city hall, so that there will be opportunities for people to buy some takeout and just go sit and enjoy sitting in the common area, in the newly cut-off court square. We also had picnic tables, once upon a time, out there, and Chief Letourneau asked me today, she said, what has happened to the picnic tables? We took them up at the beginning of the pandemic, and nobody's put them out yet, so I said, you're going to have to check with Marlo on that. He may know where the picnic tables are, or Christie. So, there will be many opportunities for, for people to take their takeout and enjoy the common.
Perfect, thank you so much. All right, anyone else? All right, unfinished business? Old business? New business? Counselor Forgé? You have our first reading, I believe, on eighty-eight?
City council, first reading, June twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. Repurpose twenty thousand four hundred and thirty-one dollars and ninety-two cents from previous authorization fiscal year nineteen dash one twenty-two, from the repair of Green River Road to paving Mackin Avenue.
Okay, thank you. So, no motions for reconsideration? Oh, Counselor Gwynn?
Under new business, I would just like to, I'm not sure what we call it, but I would like to leave a page in tonight's minutes to recognize a member of our community that passed away recently, who was a huge contributor, and that's Michael Murphy.
Yes.
Mike Murphy was the creator of Murphy Park. He was a man with a dream. He believed that he could create something that was a, abandon BMX track and make it a positive thing for Greenfield. He didn't come to us or the council for money. He went out and raised a half a million dollars with friends and stuff to put Murphy Park together. It was one of the pieces of property that, that just became synonymous with where you went for tournaments in Murphy Park, and he continued to follow that. He contributed all over the place in this community, and he was silent. And there is no one more important than the people that do things because they know it's a good thing to do and not expect anything in return. February or so of this year, he came to my office, and very much in Mike Murphy style, written, I believe, on a piece of miniograph paper and maybe a napkin. He had a plan on turning the armory into the public safety complex. And, you know, and I have that, and it'll never leave my desk. So, I just want to recognize him tonight in a page of our minutes for someone that was really special to me and special to Greenfield. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, it means a lot. Any other new business from anyone? Welcome back, everyone, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, motion for reconsideration. We have a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. Good night.